We'll call to order the December 11th meeting of the Montgomery County Plan Commission. Mr. Lenkis, you'll call and roll.
Here.
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 Thank you. And then next on our agenda is where's the approval of the agenda that you have before you?
So moved.
Select it.
Second.
Motion in a second for approval of the agenda. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise? And next on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda, and there are one addition from what was said earlier. We're adding item B, which is the final plat for the preserve at Walnut Springs, Section 7. So that's an addition to the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
The motion in a second for approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise? And then we'll move into presentations and awards, and Ms. Hopkins is going to handle that for us.
Good evening. I am actually here on two capacities this evening. So I'm here as the planning director, of course, for Montgomery County, but I am also here representing the Virginia Association of Zoning Officials as their president. It is my honor as VASO president and as the planning director to name Ms. Kimberly Wright as the 2024 Virginia Association of Zoning Officials Certified Zoning Official Award. Kim has worked in planning and zoning for over 17 years. She has served both Pulaski County and Montgomery County, and her dedication to the planning and zoning profession and her commitment to public service and our citizens, that's what distinguishes her for this recognition. So at Montgomery County, Kim has stepped up time and time again. She assists our citizens in understanding our planning or zoning processes, and she guides them through those processes. She's improved our application processes and forms over the years. She has trained our new staff members. As you know, within the last couple of years, we have quite a few new staff members. Kim has been essential in teaching those the zoning regulations and how we deal with the citizens and do our development plan review. She's coordinated plan reviews for multiple projects, little ones, big ones, small ones, plats, plans, and she also manages our agricultural and forestal district program. So she jumps at any opportunity to further her professional development, and this has made her a valuable resource to new planning and zoning professionals, not just in our department, but regionally as well. And I can't say how much we appreciate that, but her desire and attention to detail, dedication, that's what led us to promote her in January of 2024 to plan our one. She is truly an asset to Montgomery County and a shining example of what someone can achieve when they set their mind to it. She provides our citizens, developers, and our county with commendable customer service, and we are so proud of the example she sets, not just here at the county, but for zoning officials across the state of Virginia. So on behalf of myself and Justin, who unfortunately could not be here, and Montgomery County and the Virginia Association of Zoning Officials, we would like to present this award to Kim Wright, and congratulations, and thank you for your service and dedication to Montgomery County. Wonderful. Thank you all. You don't want me holding my bottle of water in the picture?
Next on the agenda is a public hearing, SUP 2024-00849. It's a request by Andrew and Katie Wells for a special use permit to allow a short-term tourist rental within an existing residential structure on property located at 2671 Lester's Gate Road. Ms. Wright will be presenting.
Thank you, Chair. Tonight we've had before you a special use permit request for a short-term rental in a dwelling located on Lester's Gate Road. On the left, you see the vicinity map with the star that shows the location, and on the right, that's a zoomed-in location that shows, in the blue is the town of Blacksburg jurisdiction, and the star is where the dwelling is located. On the left, the map shows the aerial photography of the location. You can see is pretty open area with some dwellings in the area. And on the right is the zoning map showing that the parcel is zoned R2, and there are some other zone parcels in the vicinity and agricultural across the road. Zoned, the parcel is zoned R2, which requires a special use permit to approve the use as a short-term rental. This does have supplemental regulations, and staff has recommended a few more conditions for the special use permit. The definition is a portion thereof located on an individual lot that is rented for compensation to short-term transient guests. The operator does not live on the same parcel or on an adjacent parcel. Listed are the special use permit supplemental regulations that I mentioned, including that the number of occupants will be determined by the health department's septic permit. Parking is prohibited in or along all rights of ways and in yards. The property boundaries must be clearly marked. No evidence of short-term rental on the outside, such as a sign advertising. No signs identifying property as a short-term rental. It must meet all requirements in the Virginia State Fire Prevention Code. Provide property management plan mitigating impacts for adjacent property owners. There must be a posted emergency evacuation plan for both the dwelling and the neighborhood. They must post a copy of the Montgomery County noise ordinance. Connection to a local phone service is required, and that documentation is required with their zoning permits as a rental, and all outdoor burning would be in compliance with county code. Some photography images that we have to free tonight. On the left is the existing structure in the front yard. The structure is 792 square feet and two-bedroom. On the right is the side yard with the existing outbuilding on the site. On the left is the side yard from the existing driveway and parking area. And then the rear yard is on the right, including the fire pit area that's on the site. Here's the property as seen from across the road on Lester's Gate. And this driveway parking area is to remain unchanged. The photo on the left is Lester's Gate Road looking west from the driveway, and the photo on the right is Lester's Gate Road looking east toward Harding Road. The comprehensive plan has this site designated as residential transition, which typically includes stable, low-density residential neighborhoods in close proximity to municipalities. Areas include undeveloped land that has been previously zoned for residential development, and public sewer and/or water service is limited. We have four comprehensive plan goals that are being met with approval of this special use permit, and they're outlined here. The proposed use meets the regulations outlined in the supplemental regulations. The proposed use also remains residential with no more impacts than a full-time residence, which is comparable to traditional occupancy. The applicant is currently working with the health department towards approval for use of the septic system, including replacing the septic tank that was approved to be done. And VDOT reviewed the application and took no exception to the approval of the use. Staff recommends approval of the request for a special use permit to allow the short-term tourist rental at 2671 Lester's Gate Road with the following conditions. Occupancy shall be limited to four occupants. The property shall be registered with the commissioner revenues office for meals and occupancy taxes. Any applicable permits must be obtained from the building department, and all requirements in the supplemental regulations for short-term rentals shall be met prior to issuance of the zoning permit. All adjoining property owners were notified in accordance with state and Montgomery County code. The public hearing signs were placed on the property, and the legal ads have run in the news messenger per code. Staff has received one inquiry related to this request. An email was sent to staff and planning commissioners this afternoon, and a copy of that email has been placed at everyone's seat. There are a few people that have signed up for the public hearing portion of this, and they may receive some comments from them. Now, do any of you have any questions for me?
Any questions from the commission? Thank you very much.
Okay. The applicants are also here if you have any questions for them as well.
Invite the applicants forward to speak if they'd like.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Wells, and my wife Katie and I purchased this property at 2671 Lester's Gate Road. I first just want to take a minute to thank you, the planning commission, and of course, award-winning county staff for their assistance to date, for your time and consideration as well. Understanding there's some other folks here, I also want to recognize them and thank them for their participation, questions, comments, concerns regarding this proposed request. I very much appreciate the input and welcome continued dialogue regarding this topic as we work to implement the best use for our recently purchased property. A little bit more about us. We're local. We are passionate about our community and our surrounding area, and with this approval, we will invest the time and attention necessary to maintain this revitalized property until we're prepared to build our forever home on this land. We also feel the characteristics of the home, as Ms. Kimberly Wright explained, support this request, and that the property is located on three and a half acres, giving it a nice natural barrier with the land that surrounds the home. The premises of the property is well-marked with fencing, and with a home size of less than 900 square feet, it not only doesn't encourage, but simply doesn't allow for large groups or parties. The home, of course, is located on a public road with large driveway and readily accessible access to private parking, also confirmed by staff. Again, our purpose for this home was to build our forever home, which we have discussed with county staff, but we understand that comes with some additional coordination and approvals, and know that that will not happen quickly. approvals, and know that that will not happen quickly. We also feel that, from a short-term perspective, it doesn't really change how the home is used as it would by right in a 12-month or annual lease process. We have experience in that as managers, as homeowners, and private managers, not via property management group with both long-term and short-term rentals. And our experience has been, again, that that experience has very much been the same other than the duration of the time spent in the home, whether weekly, monthly, or annually. We very much appreciate and respect the surrounding area. It's a big part of why we made the purchase. It's beautiful. Again, we intend on maintaining that integrity, being a good neighbor. We not only live in the county, but we're about three miles from this home, and it's very important to us that we maintain it with the respect for the neighbors, surrounding area, and community that they all deserve. We were shared the same comments that were shared with this group here, and I just wanted to quickly touch on a couple that were well-received and certainly understood. There was a comment of workforces coming into our community to help our community and better support our community from external areas even beyond the state line, and we recognize that and we appreciate that, and this home could or could not be a resource for those groups. We previously owned an Airbnb in Dublin, Virginia, and we, through that process, worked with a group out of North Carolina who was working here locally at our Volvo plant, and at very discounted rates and for long-term stays, we were able to accommodate that group for over two years, maybe not quite three years. So just wanted to illustrate that that is important to us, and we are very much open to a similar arrangement in this capacity. We received some comments for caring for the elderly, and that was near and dear to me because my folks are in the northern part of Virginia, and part of this purchase was to hopefully get them here full-time so that we could stay here and raise our young family, but also be able to care for Mom and Dad as they age and need that assistance. We hope that that's a plan for the near future, which would become a primary residence for them at that point, living full-time with us nearby. The final one was about kind of the perspective or opinion of commercialization, hoteling, business that all are associated with an Airbnb application. And again, I just wanted to take the time to reiterate that, and our experience and our opinion, really the major difference, the occupants are just occupying for a lesser duration than they would under a 12-month cycle, which is currently approved by Wright. With that, I just want to thank the Planning Commission again, county staff, and those others interested who have joined this evening to participate in the conversation. Thank you so much.
Just a second, see if there's any questions for the applicant. Any questions? Okay, sir. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
And Katie Wells has signed up. Did you want to speak as well? So we will open up the floor for public comment, public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak can come forward. You have three minutes, and we ask you to state your name and address. Oh, I'm sorry. And I do have a list. I'm sorry, but we'll let you go ahead, and then we'll go for the list.
Good evening. My name is Marcy Gannett. I live at 2714 Bunny Trail Drive. I abut this property. This is my second time in this room for the same purpose, actually, because there was a previous special use permit on Harding Road, which didn't abut me. It was very close, but it didn't abut me. I'm confused about one thing on this property. The owners are not allowed to live on the parcel, correct? That was one of the stipulations above, and they say they want to build a permanent home here? Will that change the use of the property?
So they can live on the property. The reason they need the special use permit is because they do not currently live on the property.
So if they build their home, they can live, they can have both?
Yes.
And is it the owner's intent to have his parents live there later?
Address the commission, your line.
I'm confused by what he said. I need some clarification. Is it his intent later to have his parents live in this little house? Would that change the special use permit?
Would not.
Okay. This is a very rural neighborhood, and now we have two special use permits existing in this rather tight little area, and it just kind of changes the character of the neighborhood. It's not rural. It's very rural. There are cows across the street. There are cows in their backyard. I'm wondering about the long-term effect on the area. Each issue has to come up as a special use permit. If other people want to do this, I mean, they're... I don't want to see a neighborhood full of little short-term rentals, I guess.
I understand.
Okay. It can happen?
When you get through speaking, maybe we'll ask the staff to clarify for us.
Would you repeat that, please?
See, when you get through with your address to the commission, we'll ask for some clarification.
Thank you.
So in regards of a neighborhood of short-term rentals, our short-term rental ordinance is written in a way that it is by right in some particular instances, and in other instances, it requires a special use permit. So it depends on each individual circumstance and each property as to what is required to have a short-term rental. Because the owners do not live on this property, it does require the special use permit, and that's why they are before you today. We do review each special use permit individually and consider them individually.
Thank you very much. The next person on our list is Janet Donahue. Janet, would you like to speak? Pull the mic down if you don't mind so we can hear you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
My name is Janet Donahue. I live at 2722 Bunny Trail Drive. I am not a person that directly abuts the property, but I overlook the property. I can see their house and their field from my back, the back of my house. I just wanted to say that I like the thoroughness of what the Planning Commission has laid out, and I like the intent of the new property owners, and so I would be very happy to have them come and be part of the neighborhood.
The fourth person to sign up is Michael, and I'm having trouble with the last name. Gannett, or maybe you can help me.
Sure. Happy to help. I'm Michael Callahan. Greatly appreciate your time and willingness to listen.
I'm sorry. Callahan, did you say?
Correct.
Okay. We have two Michaels, so I'm going to let you speak, and then we'll get you next.
No, no, after you. After you, please.
I did sign up, but I'm not choosing this one.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry for the confusion.
Yep, yep. A common... Well, maybe if it's okay, I'll take the time with the applicant, and it seems like a minimum of three minutes, potentially if more is needed. First, I appreciate your willingness to listen to this challenging topic of housing affordability and access for community members. I've sent a detailed email with many comments from the community members, and appreciate what the staff has done to try and evaluate this, but there's challenges in the process of not having all the information and insights. The reality is short-term rentals do cause housing challenges for communities. They change the neighborhood. As I said, we're having multiple... It's not a community nor a neighborhood anymore. This is a residential area, and while the owners might have aspirations in the future, and I agree and share that passion for the community, that is not what's on the table now. Now it's running a commercial hotel operation on an Airbnb in a house that has never been lived in, moved in. This house was just purchased. There were four other families who made offers, at least. They were unsuccessful, but knowing that they now have housing challenges that they're faced with in the community. Myself, as I said, think of this as a large, and I appreciate what Justin and the community planner had done to say that they evaluate on a case-by-case basis, and I appreciate you all's rights and the actions you're taking to protect the community and this critical issue of housing affordability that really impacts everyone. Me personally is just the case story, and it goes to, I moved here because of my mom, who is currently ill and needs care, and I need to be here and be here locally. For years, I've been struggling with housing rental challenges, been struggling with purchasing because of the lack of availability, affordability, and access. By doing this, taking another house off the market right now, while some future house could come, and house could be built, that's not what's happening now. This is an indefinite permit to run a hotel next to a neighbor that doesn't want it and a community and many community members that don't want it. If we were in Blacksburg, this wouldn't be allowed. Many municipalities across the nation don't allow this. What has happened is technology has accelerated what government regulation protections aren't able to do. You can understand as a tangent with cell phones, social media as an example, in schools and what it does to children, but now Blacksburg has a no-cellphone policy, which helps. This is very similar, as Airbnb and VRBO have a corporate process that are allowing...
Michael, could you wrap it up? Your three minutes is...
Sure. Sure. So I request additional time. I think that's allowed.
I think we're going to stay with our three-minute limit. If it's a... We're going to stay with the three-minute limit to allow other people to comment as well?
Well, since I'm the last person to comment, there's a detailed email, and I guess, thinking about your community, thinking about the passionate protection of community and rights, thinking about a flawed process, and the comment that Justin had said, it's a case-by-case process to evaluate the impact on the community, not just a sole individual to earn short-term profits or corporations, when there's the equal opportunity to rent long-term that would increase availability of housing for me or many others of the other families that bid on this house.
Okay. Thank you, Michael.
Please read this note. Please consider it. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions and follow up with anyone on this. Appreciate your willingness to protect and serve the community.
Thank you. And the other Michael, the other Michael, did you want to speak? Okay. And so is there anyone else here that would like to speak to this issue? Okay, so we will close the public portion of the public hearing and open up for the
So it is limited to four people and two cars. That's what Justin's... Okay. And how often can they turn it over?
I mean, there really is no limit on how often. They cannot, for it to qualify as a short-term rental, it cannot be rented more than 30 consecutive days. Once it gets into the 30 consecutive days, it then becomes a long-term rental, which of course is permissible. The thing with the special use permit is once it, once it no longer is considered a short-term rental, means, meaning they rent it long-term, if they do that for more than two years, they lose the SUP and have to come back.
Okay.
So let's say he did, he gave the example of Dublin, and they had rented to Volvo, and it was the same occupants
Right.
For two years. At that point in Montgomery County, his SUP would be void, and he would have to come back.
And when does that happen? After how long? A year? Two years?
After two years.
Two.
Yes. Once it ceases, once the use that is attached to the special use permit ceases to exist for a period of two years or more, then it requires a new special use permit.
Okay. Can he, or can they, can the family ever, I guess what I'm saying is, can you add on, make it bigger, more cars, make it more of a...
If they wanted...
Have the SUP?
So depending on how it is approved, if it is approved with the conditions as stipulated by staff
Right.
And let's say instead of four people, they wanted to rent it to six.
Right.
They would have to come back before the board to amend the SUP.
That's how I understood it.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chair, I was just looking at the aerial, and just for my own peace of mind, I guess, it does look like there's fencing, and I apologize, I have not been out to the site. Are there cows on the back part of the parcel? And if so, do we know who's going to maintain that? It looks like, I'm looking at the aerial view, and it looks like the brown dots are cows with hay. And I know a citizen mentioned that there's cattle on the property. Do we know that?
Does staff know? Kim, do you know? Do we have livestock on the property?
Maybe a question for the applicant real quick.
Yeah, thank you for the question. We visited the home with interest of purchase with the livestock present, and upon closing, they were not there. And our 11, nine, and two-year-old daughter, well, maybe not the two-year-old, but the 11 and nine-year-old had questions. That was part of the environment and the landscape that we appreciated and enjoyed. Via the sellers, we made contact with the owners of the cows and explained to them that we very much wanted to retain that arrangement, and that field was available for them, and they very kindly brought the cows back to the property. But also, maybe to answer your question for what it's worth, the three and a half acres are divided horizontally from the two property lines that run perpendicular to Lester's Gate with a fence, so we are currently engaged with the contractor to mow everything in front of that fence, and the livestock kind of roam the back part there where you see the small pond.
Okay. Thank you.
I think what kind of sticks out to me is, in our staff presentation, it says that this use would be no more impacts than what is allowed by right. In other words, it's residential. If people are living there residential, no more than four people, it's not causing any more impacts. And the reason for the condition use permit is to see what type of impacts are there, and if we can mitigate those impacts. But if the report's saying there is no impacts, then there's not a whole lot for us to mitigate.
And I would just echo, I mean, our purview on the Planning Commission is looking at the comp plan and land use impacts, and that's how I always approach these situations, and I would be agreeing, agreement with that.
It seemed like the letter that we got doesn't really speak to this particular property. It's more about in general, Airbnb in general. And that might be a good conversation for the comprehensive plan update that we're going through and so forth, but as far as this particular property, you know, I didn't hear anything that says that this impact is affecting me and can we mitigate it.
Read the letter.
There are a lot of macro aspects to this, and I think your point is well-made about the comp plan.
I have a question about the previous SUP that was brought to us. Was it approved by the Board of Supervisors?
Yes, it was.
And was that just like three months ago or four?
I would like to think it was three months ago, but I have learned lately that my concept of time is very far off. It was within the last year. I can say that.
Any further questions, comments? Any further questions, comments? Entertaining motion?
Ms. Chairman, I move the approval of the staff's recommendation with conditions.
With the conditions noted? Okay, we have a motion and second. Is there any further discussion, comments? Okay, I'll ask Mr. Lincoln, pole commission.
Mr. Crow.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 And so now we will move to the public address portion of our meeting, where anyone that would like to address the commission about any other topic other than the public hearing that we just had, you're sure welcome to come forward. You have three minutes.
I would like, appreciate the willingness to discuss this issue on a macro level. So appreciate Justin's mention of this topic of short-term rentals and the challenges that they have on communities, changing the character of communities, chasing affordability, changing access. And this has impacts directly on individuals. My story, as I shared on my story, and also on a macro level, so I moved into one place and was kicked out after thirty, after a while, because it was turned into a short-term rental. So having housing scarcity while still trying to care for an elderly parent wasn't able to have the stability of a house. Then continued to look for another place that was only available in the summer because they wanted to rent it out over football season. And then was forced to live in what was available, which was a rental that had mold issues that the landlord chose not to mitigate. After that, was continuing to search for housing, so over years and the lack. There's many people, many community members who have expressed concerns at the macro level of what Airbnb short-term rentals are doing. Justin, the planner, has committed to this, and I think it's time, instead of looking at just an individual, individual rights, of what the impact of technologies and being able to rent places day-to-day to different people from all over the world or have outside investors buy up communities, buy up rural land. And it's at these planning committee meetings and your planners, their rights, their responsibilities to think of these larger impacts before it's too late, before it further makes the housing problems worse. So while many of you have different backgrounds, appreciate what you're willing to do to be on a planning committee, and request that you take this issue more broadly, as was mentioned, to think about what happened in Blacksburg, a neighbor. What's happened there is just the same, crossing the line into the county. It's not that it's their problem, or it's in the county, and the exact same things happen, it's just that there's a different political momentum there that doesn't allow this at the macro. We need our local and city governments to protect our communities, our citizens, and our people. Housing is critical. Healthcare is critical. College education is critical. And it's at places like this, where you have the power, the right, and the responsibility to do the right thing, to protect our community, a community that we are all passionate about, so that people just don't think about what they need to make. So I appreciate you all's efforts, the extra time that you do. Again, too, this isn't what I want to do, this isn't what anyone wants to do, the regulations and the protection should be clear, so that we don't have to go through, as mentioned before, that another hearing like this for the next, enough is enough. There's been multiple approved, so I appreciate you all's willingness to think, sleep on this, and really study this issue. Today's headline, "Housing Crisis in America," it's right here in Montgomery County.
Yeah.
Appreciate you all taking action to do something about it.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else that would like to approach the commission? We will close the public address portion of our meeting and move into work session.
Ms. Chairman, I move that we move into the work session.
Second.
So we have a motion and second entering work session. All those in favor, signify 5% aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, likewise. And we will be talking about the Montgomery Matters update.
Yes. So we have a few updates from our comprehensive planning process. The first is our engagement matters. We did a lot over the first six months to get engagement from the public. We've had a community survey. We went out, Justin and I, and actually all of staff, Justin, Kim, Shelley, Jude, Cody, Amanda, we were all out in the community, going to various events and talking to people. I have to say, we actually had conversations, because we recorded on a little clicker with over 900 people during the summer, so that was exciting. And what we have been doing since then is processing those results, and we've included the feedback we've received, conversation that we've had with our stakeholder meetings and people that have subject matter knowledge and are considered experts. And then we've also compared a lot of the data to determine what our trends look like. So this is kind of a graphic showing our engagement summary. We've had 10 stakeholder meeting discussions, and we've met with over 71 stakeholders. And so those were individual meetings. We held some through Zoom. We did hold some here in person at the Government Center. We have had 35 meeting attendees. That was for the first open house, so we do not have the numbers for the second yet. But just through that meeting alone in June, we got over 730 comments and seven, and dots that were placed to let us know what they liked and what they didn't. We had over 1,000 people submit the survey, so we were really excited about that. 1,000 was our goal, and we received 1,007. And then in addition to that, we had the social pinpoint map that was on the web, and we received over 306 unique map comments. So what that means is those were different comments. We received a lot more comments than that, but a lot of them were not unique. They were basically repeats of other comments that were already on the map. We did have a higher response rate within the towns, although that does kind of align, because that is where the majority of the population is, is within Christiansburg and Blacksburg. That does just give us the urge to go out to the villages and try to get some more comments from the more rural areas. We will be doing that in the spring. We did have a lot of response rates among those under the age of 30. That will also help inform some of that village outreach that we do. We're trying to be real careful not to over-survey, but still get the information that we need, and so going out to those villages will help a lot of that. During all this, we did identify some major themes. A lot of what we heard was about environmental resources, and that wound up encompassing a lot of things. Parks and trails came out of that. We had a lot of comments about environmental protection, including water, tributaries, creeks, streams. Housing, of course, was a big topic, and you've heard a little bit about that tonight. So we do hear a lot about housing and affordability, which is very difficult. Healthcare access, and then regional cooperation between governments, and then also with higher education, and then nonprofit service providers. And some of that even tied back into that housing, like how can we work with our corporations and our businesses and our nonprofit services to try to get some more affordable housing in the area? Data collection and analysis. So we got tons of data from all kinds of sources. We used data from existing local organizations. We then went out and got census data, data from the Weldon Cooper Center, U.S. Department of Housing. So just multiple things, multiple plans. Towns of Blacksburg and Christiansburg, we have their building permit data. Christiansburg is also going through a comprehensive plan process, and so we have some of their survey data that they have received. And then, of course, our PSA and our Health District also gave us some information on So we took all of that data, and we analyzed it, and what we prepared was a state of the county and engagement matters report. That will serve as an appendix to Montgomery Matters. The reason we want that to serve as an appendix, we do not want our comp plan to be a 500-page booklet that someone has to flip through to try to figure out what the goals of the county are. So these are actually separate documents that will be in the appendix of the Montgomery Matters section, that will have all the background data and have a full analysis. That report is on the Montgomery Matters website now, so you can actually go out there and take a look at that data, and we'll be using that as we move forward. We've compared that data to other communities that are similar to us. We've looked at it in terms of our goals, to see what our goals were in the old plan, and see what goals we have met. Do they need to be changed based on this data? Are we looking in the wrong direction? Is the trend, are the trends changing? So that will help us develop goals for the new plan. So with that, the next steps. We did share some draft goals at the community workshop on November 20th. We are currently being, taking those comments and integrating that, what we received, and to get a little more firm draft goals. And we're planning on sharing that on an online survey to get additional community feedback. So when that goes out, we would love for you to share it and let us know what you think. Village outreach, as I stated, will begin in the spring of 2025. EPR is going to be helping us do all of the village plans. We do have some preliminary work that was performed in Prices Fork and in Reiner, and so they're using that preliminary, but we are still going back out to those villages to see what else we need. It won't be exactly starting over, but we're not going to just say, oh, we've already heard this, and it's two years old, so we're going to use it. So we are going back there. Prior to going out, and one of the reasons we haven't started going out, we are currently looking, we do not have anything that defines what a village is. So we're currently looking to say, what's a criteria for being a village? And then we can look and evaluate to make sure all the areas we have indicated as villages are truly villages, and are there other areas that maybe should be villages that aren't because they meet this definition of the criteria? The other thing that it will do is it will help us determine what those boundaries need to be, and that, of course, defines where those growth areas are. So EPR has also contracted with the county. They will be doing the Parks and Rec Master Plan. So that is good news for us, because we are able to actually cross-promote those engagement opportunities. So while we are out getting comments for the village plans, we can also be getting comments for the Parks and Rec Plan. And while they're out getting comments for the Parks and Rec Plan, we can be getting comments for the overall comprehensive plan or the village plans. So that will, that will lead to be a very good joint effort. The other thing is while the Parks and Recs plan, they're more like a five-to-10-year plan, whereas the comp plan, of course, is 20 years. We can still make sure that our goals are consistent with what they want to accomplish over the next few years as well. So that will have a really good coordination for our Parks and Rec component of our comp plan. It was sort of brief, sort of short. I have any questions? If, can I answer any questions you guys have?
So I might ask just maybe a general question. Are we still in gathering data, or are we trying to flesh out some goals and priorities? Where does-
Yes.
Are they listed on the lines where we can look and see what those are?
So the goals are not listed yet, but they will be listed along with an online survey. We have kind of fleshed out a lot of data, so we're taking that data, this is for the overall comp plan, to develop our overall goals, so our big chapters, our housing chapters, our environmental chapters, health and human services, public safety. We are developing all of those goals now, based on what we've heard from the public, what we've gathered data-wise, and what we see our trends going toward. And so we will have those goals for the overall plan. We are still in data gathering mode when it comes to the villages, because we still have to get out there and hear from them and gather that data. So it's kind of both. We're still in data gathering when it comes to villages, but for overall comp plan, we've gathered most of the data, and now we're trying to digest it, create those goals, and start doing a lot of the writing. So the next few months, there will be a lot of writing to come forward for review.
And so during this process, like we had some speakers tonight that were talking about stuff that was more geared towards comprehensive plan goals.
Yes.
How did they get engaged in the process? Avenues for them? Is it-
Absolutely. Montgomery Matters website has information. We have email addresses. This, I would say this document that we received this evening will actually become part of the comprehensive plan data as we look at it when it goes into housing. But all they have to do is reach out and contact us through Montgomery Matters. Everything will be posted on that website, so those goals that I talked about, that survey will be open for anyone, and we'll do a push through our Public Relations Office. So we'll have it on the main Montgomery County page. We'll also be sending it out to any listservs that we have and things like that.
Okay.
Yes.
So Ms. Hopkins, we might conceivably end up with five villages, or 10 villages, or whatever. Yes.
Correct. I don't, I don't see us having many more than we have now. I would say we're going to stay about the same. We may, we have one area in particular, and I don't want to give anything away yet, that may not qualify as a village that's currently designated, and so it might go to something like a urban expansion area or something like that.
Thank you. That was to be my next question, that if a village doesn't meet our new or reformed definition, then what happens? Because in the past, we've enforced certain regulations.
Correct. Correct. And I don't see it, there's some differences in a village and like our urban expansion areas. Our village goals talk about consistency with current development, what we want it to look like. It gets more into the, to the looks and the appearance, and the preservation of the community. Whereas our urban expansion areas, they're slated for development, just like our village areas, but it's not as tied down, so to speak. Like, we don't speak to parking has to be in the rear or the sides. We don't speak to those type of things in the urban expansion areas. So it doesn't mean it will not be a growth area, it just means it will not be classified separately as a village.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there going to be a new Mud Pike Village proposed?
Beg your pardon, I didn't hear your question.
He can be the mayor.
Mr. Crow, do you have a comment?
No, I have a question. Bree, can you just kind of walk me through how the website structured? The story maps on the Montgomery Matters ARC GIS webpage, is that different? I was trying to find the SOC document with all that data report.
Okay.
And I couldn't, I couldn't find the link to it. And so I wasn't sure, is that part of the ARC GIS?
I thought the, no, I thought the link was right on the homepage. Let me verify. I can absolutely send that out to you all.
Okay.
Just to make sure you have it.
So is there a link on the planning comp plan that gets you over to the new Montgomery Matters comp plan update page?
It's MontgomeryMatters.com, or, I'm sorry, dot, hold on.
Oh, I know, but is there a link from the county website that- Oh, I know, but is there a link from the county website, the, the planning department's?
I believe so, yes. Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, Montgomery Matters 2045 Comp Plan Survey, there's a link.
And I will be honest, I have clicked on the state of the county report multiple times, and I'm looking now to see where that link is.
Okay. All right, thank you. Will you show me where it is after the meeting?
Yes, and I will send out a direct link as well. We'll send it out to all planning commission members.
It's a really nice report. I would say I read it, and yes, for anybody in the audience that hasn't, it does consolidate a lot of information. And yeah, gives you kind of where we're going forward. At least you know where you stand and where we're moving forward, or what mattered to people that showed up. Yes. That's the big thing, show up.
That, that is it. We want to see as many people as we can. We want people to be involved. They can go to our website. There is an email list that they can sign up for, so they'll know when we're having meetings, open houses here in the villages, all of that. There's also links that they can email us, give us any comments, tell us what their concerns are. So there's, there's all kinds of opportunities, and, and we would love for people to take advantage of that.
Bree, I would echo that. I was at the November meeting, and while the numbers of citizenry were small, they were vitally interested, and it was extremely well-planned and well-played, both by staff and the public. Thank you.
Thank you. I was very excited, and I actually had this for my planning director's report, but I think it is the first comprehensive plan event that we have had, including the ones we had in 2000, 2000 to 2004. Every one of my staff members was present. And they are a wonderful team, and I can't speak their praises enough. They did awesome. They, you know, they talk to our citizens. And it is exactly what you said. We noticed this both in the November and in the June open house. You know, as a planner, you always have a dream, you want at least 100 people. You know, you have that number in your head. And so when you get, we had 34 in June, you're kind of disappointed. But then when you hear out of those 34 people, you got 730 pieces of input. That's a lot. I would rather have 34 really engaged people that gives me 730 comments than have 100 people and get 100 comments. So everyone that has attended the event has, has been really engaged, and we're really excited about that.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to leave.
So moved.
Work session?
Second.
Second. We have a motion and second to leave our work session. All those in favor, signify a percent aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. And looking at old business, there are no listed items of old business. And then in new business, we have the 2025 officer elections. And we will look to Mr. Workman for a report from the nominating committee.
Mr. Bowles and I were on the nominating committee, and we brought forth the following slate of candidates for the 2025 year. And I would like to move that forward to the commission. If there are any other comments or anyone else wants to come forward.
Okay, I'm seeing it. Okay. Chair, Mr. Rice, Vice Chair, Mr. Foster, Secretary Lonnie Linkus. Okay. Are there any additional nominations from the floor for any position? And so I'll entertain a motion to put forward the slate as presented.
So moved.
And we got a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify a percent aye.
Aye.
And those against likewise. So we have the same chair, or the same slate of officers as next year. Yeah, thank you. Liaison reports, and we'll start with Mr. King, if you have a report for us, sir.
Good evening, everybody. Don't have no report, but I would like to say from board, congratulations. We appreciate everything you do for the citizens of Montgomery County. Thank you. And on the PSA side, got good news. We have hooked up over 150 new citizens to water, good fresh water. And that's about it, but I would like to say Merry Christmas to everybody, and I hope you enjoy your family when time around Christmas. One important thing I always tell staff members, when you're with your family, cut your phones off, enjoy your family.
Thank you, Mr. King. And the Blacksburg Plan Commission, Ms. Andrea Sharp-Robson? Okay, I understand. And the Christiansburg Plan Commission, I believe that they've canceled the last meeting. I don't, I don't think we've got anything coming from Christiansburg. And then the Radford Plan Commission, Pam, Ms. Simpkins?
They canceled their meeting.
Canceled the meeting, okay. Tourism with Ms. Miller?
We'll meet again.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I do have a tourism update. We were told this morning in leadership by the current interim tourism director, Mr. Lawrence, who's filling in, that Christiansburg did approve last night that they would continue with the tourism for another three years.
Another three, about that. Parks and Recreation with Mr. Workman?
We'll meet tomorrow.
Meet tomorrow, okay. And so then, Bree, that leaves you. Ms. Hopkins with the planning director's report.
Sorry, I have a couple of updates. Michael Stotherland, our GIS manager, has announced his retirement, and he is, is out on leave until then. So he will, he will be retiring effective, I want to say February 1. I hope that is correct. But in the meantime, if you need anything, you can reach out to me or to Cody Andrews. Cody Andrews has been promoted to senior GIS analyst effective December 1 in our office. So he has, has been helping me at the, at the helm with GIS for the last several weeks, and he's doing a wonderful job. Our transportation planner position that we have had posted since probably June, we do finally have another slate of qualified applicants that we are going to be interviewing over the next few weeks. A couple of them are recent Virginia, or recent university graduates, or they are, they have an, a pending graduation coming up. So there were some exam conflicts and things like that. So we do have one interview coming up this week, and then we have some more interviews coming up the first full weekend in January that we're here. So hopefully, by January, we will have at least an idea of, of where we're going with that position, and we can get it filled, because it is definitely needed. Transportation seems to be a daily thing for me here lately. In the new year, we will also be putting out an RFP for zoning ordinance rewrite. We purposely have delayed this behind the comp plan. We want our comp plan a little ahead of that, because it will drive what the ordinance says. However, we are at a point with our zoning ordinance that it is vital that, that we get some text amendments. We bring to you a few, it seems like each year, but we are constantly saddled with uses that are not allowed for because they, they were not even conceived when the ordinance was written in 1999. So we're, we're hoping to get an RFP and then start with a consultant, at least by the beginning of the next fiscal year, in doing a zoning ordinance rewrite. So you will definitely be hearing about that in your new year. Congratulations again to Kim for Certified Zoning Official of the Year. We are very proud of her. And all I have left is Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Thank you. Any further comments, question? That was part of our consent agenda, I believe. Yep, yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
It's been a pretty good year. I'd like to thank staff, even the ones hiding over there, for all the work that they put in. And want to wish all of you a Merry Christmas.
Well, thank you, thank you.
Or happy holidays, or whatever.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. With that, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor? Thank you, we're adjourned.